The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sianna. Roll call please. Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Losi?
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Long? Here. Thank you, Sianna. If anyone on the call would please just turn off your video and mute yourself until you are ready to comment or give a staff report or whatever it is, just so we can keep our screen a little more focused. I would really appreciate it. We have a presentation tonight. A couple of things. Introduction of our new park maintenance worker, Cameron. I think that's you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having me. Unfortunately, Amber Nuschwander could not be here this evening. She had a family emergency arise last minute, but I am still going to continue with her welcoming. So Amber Nuschwander was a Parks One employee, which is our part-time position, and she worked with the Parks Department for a year and a half. And then we had an opening for a full-time Parks Two position in which she applied for. And that's been her goal since she started with the Parks was to get that full-time position. And she certainly has proved herself over the last year and a half and had a strong interview. So we did hire her on for that Parks Two position. Amber's a really strong worker. She has a really strong work ethic. She's a busybody. She's learned quite a bit over the last year and a half. And so a lot of great attributes that contribute to the Parks team. She is a Fortuna resident. She's a very dedicated Fortuna resident. In fact, she's the kind of person who, you know, when she's going from job site to job site, if she sees a mess in town, she cannot help herself and has to clean up any mess. So she's responsible for keeping our city clean as well as maintaining our beautiful parks. So I just wanted to take a moment to welcome Amber and thanks for the opportunity and hopefully you'll all get to meet her in person at some point soon.
Is she the one that helped out with the Little Hot Shots program last year?
Uh, she was, she was working weekends, so she was probably the Parks Maintenance Worker that stopped in. Yeah, so I'm sure you have met her before. Yep.
She was very helpful.
She is. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Cameron. Tell her welcome for us and we're sorry we didn't actually get to see her, but we will one day.
All right, I will do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next presentation is from Summer Doherty, Senior Environmentalist, Senior Environmental Analyst of Humboldt County, and she's going to talk to us about the Eel River Groundwater Sustainability Planning Update. Welcome, Summer.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Appreciate all of your time this evening. Sianna, can you allow me to share my screen?
You should be able to share.
Okay. Let me... Hold on, navigate those things. Let's see.
While Summer's doing that, I'll just remind our audience that if you are not speaking on an item yet, to turn your video off for us, please.
And let me just confirm the screen that you have. Sorry, let's see. Are you able to see a presentation screen okay?
Yes.
I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna really quickly just confirm I have the right one.
Summer, it was showing the screen with your notes, so you might want to select BF2 monitors, the other monitor.
Got it. How's that, Merritt?
That looks perfect.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thanks again for having us. My name is Summer Doherty and I work for the County of Humboldt and the Public Works Department and Environmental Services Division. And tonight, we're going to talk a little bit, let me bring you back to that first slide, about the Eel River Groundwater Sustainability Plan. This is driven by the California Department of Water Resources. And tonight, we're going to go into, give you an overview on just, really, this is just an overview of the project and what's going on, answer any questions you have. And then Jack, who's with me here tonight, will provide information and background about Sigma and the work that we've done to date. And then I'll come in and I'll talk a bit more about the work that we're doing currently to come into compliance with Sigma. And then talk again about the next steps and next steps to completing the groundwater sustainability plan. And then finally, open it up for any questions that you may have. So tonight with me is Jack Rice. He's a consultant for the County of Humboldt. His company is the Western Resource Strategies. And he's working with us to help with stakeholder outreach and the development of the groundwater sustainability plan. So I'm gonna kick it off with him in just a moment, but I wanted to mention and highlight the work that the city your staff is already doing to support this plan and the work in the county. And so Merritt Perry, your City Manager, has been part of the working group since around 15, I want to say, 15 or 16. And currently, we're also working with Merritt, Brendan Byrd, and Chris Christensen to install some monitoring wells within this, a couple monitoring wells within the city limits, as well as Chris has provided all of your groundwater pumping, water use data, as well as discharge data. So thank you to your staff for your participation and support in the project and and also just for your input into the process. I really appreciate that. So I'm going to pass it over to Jack Rice.
Summers, thank you, Mayor Long, and members of the council. Summer, can you go to the next slide? Just a little orientation about Sigma and the area we're talking about. What you, this map you see here is a map of the Eel River Valley Groundwater Basin. This is the geographic area that the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act applies to that we're talking about. DWR established this basin a long time ago. It's kind of based on the alluvial geology. And so this is the area that we're looking at, including Fortuna and the other towns and a lot of the ag land in the Ferndale Valley. Next slide. So the Sigma's a very complicated law. We're going to give a very brief overview just to orient you to what is required and why we're having this presentation. Legislature recognizing groundwater problems in many areas of California passed the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act in 2014. The purpose of that act was to ensure that groundwater supplies remains sustainable into the future. The goal was to achieve that through local management, not through the state mandate. So there's an opportunity for this these requirements to be met by local government, in this case, the county. If that fails, the state is a backstop, so there's a lot of incentive to make sure we handle this locally. The process for this is to establish a groundwater sustainability agency. That's the first step. The second step is that agency develops a groundwater sustainability plan. And then finally, once that plan's adopted, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency will implement that plan, conduct monitoring and reporting as required by the law. Next slide. So to date, what have we done? Since the law was passed, the county recognized that this would affect our area, so they very quickly put together a groundwater, Eel Valley Groundwater Working Group to help grapple with the issue. They began to collect data, received a grant from DWR, worked with others in the basin to collect more information. They attempted to create an alternative, and that alternative ended up being rejected, but all of that information that was utilized is helpful in developing the groundwater sustainability plan. So now, since the alternative was rejected in late 2019, the county immediately began working on establishing a groundwater sustainability agency. That was done early in 2020. Now they're focused on developing the groundwater sustainability plan. Also received nearly a $2 million grant from DWR for that, for the development of the groundwater sustainability plan. Turn it back to Summer for update on the current work in progress.
Yes, so currently, the project team is reaching out to stakeholders to provide information about Sigma and the process for completing the Eel River Valley groundwater sustainability plan. And some of the meetings include presentations to local agencies, individual or small group meetings with agricultural producers and irrigators, individual or group meetings with environmental interest groups, and essentially anybody else we can reach out to and encourage participation and share the information with. And so other opportunities to be involved, we'll discuss a little bit later in this presentation. So the intent of the data is to fill in data gaps, so using the historical information, current information that we're collecting now and to establish baselines and understand how we're moving forward. So the data that we're currently collecting, currently in collecting includes installing 23 groundwater monitoring wells entirely within the county road right-of-way, working with irrigators to install six flow meters so that we can better understand the applied groundwater volumes in the basin, installing installation of the DWR CMIS station. So that is the California Irrigation Management Information System, which is installed kind of centrally in the Ferndale Valley, and it provides essentially minute-by-minute weather data, evapotranspiration. This data is available online for free, so you can actually type in CMIS and it will pull up the data web page and you can scroll through and look at different websites or weather stations around the state. And then also monitoring groundwater elevations as well as water quality and saltwater content throughout the year, and then also measuring stream flows. We're looking closely also at the lower reaches of the Eel River and the Van Duzen to identify sensitive areas that could be vulnerable to excessive groundwater pumping. And also finally, the project team is, technical team is developing a sophisticated groundwater model to describe the movement of groundwater, to describe the surface water-groundwater interactions and those interactions, how those interactions change throughout the year and under different circumstances or conditions. We'll be sharing that information about the model as it becomes available, and this will feed into developing a water budget, understanding sustainable management criteria, and setting thresholds. So that's that is something that we'll bring back and ask for participation and feedback in the future. So in the big picture, there are basically three big questions that frame our work. The first question is, does it, does pumping affect river flows during the summer and fall? If the answer is yes, then we need to understand how much. We also need to understand if pumping is causing a significant and unreasonable impact to beneficial uses of interconnected surface waters. Second question is, does pumping affect the intrusion of seawater in the aquifer along the coastline? And if yes, if there's an, if that effect is significant and unreasonable. And then finally, Sigma requires us to answer the question, what is the sustainable yield of groundwater, of the groundwater basin? In other words, how much groundwater can be pumped without causing undesirable results? So under Sigma, we need to have the data and fundamental tools to answer all of these questions. Right now, there's really, it's too early to determine the level of sustainability in the basin, or if any management actions will be warranted. Those considerations will come later in the process after the data is collected and the analysis is performed and criteria developed. So this leads then to our next steps.
So what's next? You have a chart here outlining the number of activities that are generally occurring simultaneously. Just to summarize those quickly, we're going to continue to collect data to improve that model that Summer was discussing, and we appreciate working with Fortuna. I know they've collected data on the wastewater and measured the wells, and that's been helpful because part of getting the water budget together is getting the information from the users in the basin. So appreciate the work with Merritt and the team at Fortuna to do that. So in addition to that ongoing technical work, we're continuing the stakeholder engagement. That's what, obviously what this is part of, reaching out to all the different groups of stakeholders. And also trying to have a better understanding of how the information is affecting the planning. Because there's a kind of a policy piece to Sigma, which is, how do we know what a problem is, or if the effect is occurring, how much is too much? So big engagement on that process as we move forward. And that really rolls into the next thing, which is GSP development, the Groundwater Sustainability Plan itself. There'll be information rolling out through the rest of this year on the plan itself, what it says, so there'll be opportunities to come in. You can go to the next slides. So there's a number of ways, we put this up here for the community that may be interested in becoming involved. Essentially, we're looking for any way to engage with people that are interested, open to reaching out to anyone in whatever form we can reasonably accommodate. I will say that one of the best ways to know what's going on is to contact Summer, and maybe Summer, we can go to that last page where you're emailed. Contact Summer and get put on to the Interested Stakeholders list, if anybody wants to keep track of that. We also have a webpage you can access to, humboldtgroundwater.com. That'll take you to the county's webpage with all of this information. As this process continues, there'll be draft chapters of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan that may warrant review and comment by city or other stakeholders as well. Really quick, brief summary of Sigma and what we're doing here in the county. Are there any questions we can answer?
Does anyone from the council have any questions? Does anyone from the public have any questions?
Madam Mayor, I do have a real quick question.
Go ahead.
With regard to GSA, what types of management actions would there be taken? I imagine it depends on the significant and adverse impact that you find, but what would some of those management actions be?
It's a good question. So the information indicating, or that we have to date, isn't showing us where a problem may occur. But if there is, or in basins in California where there is an imbalance and you've, and a problem has been identified, there's sort of two valves you can go to turn. You can try to supply side, so you can try to add more water to the basin. Or you can turn the demand valve and somehow restrict groundwater extraction. So those are kind of the two different options you have. There's a number of ways to do both of those in different areas. They depend on what you have. You can do groundwater recharge. You can do in-lu recharge, which is people using surface water if it's available instead of groundwater. On the demand side, you encourage farmers to utilize different irrigation technologies that may reduce the pumping while more or less maintaining the production of their farms. So all of those actions and those different ideas will be explored as part of the GSP. Whether they're required or not depends, as you pointed out, on the, whether you find there's an imbalance.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Summer and Jack, for your presentation and for being here tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for having us. We appreciate that as well.
All right.
See you soon for more information.
Okay, see you soon.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to oral comments from the public. Does anyone have any comments that they would like to address to the council that are not on our agenda tonight? There is a banner with a number you can call if you would like to comment, or if you are already on our feed, you are welcome to comment.
So could I say something?
Sure.
Hello?
We couldn't understand you. Are you still there? Did we totally lose her?
No, I'm here. I don't think I can turn my video on. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so is this public comment on non-agenditized items or agenditized items?
Non-agend.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna wait for the agenda item. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we will move on to our consent calendar. We have nine items tonight, including city council minutes and all of our monthly reports from administrative, community development, finance, parks and rec, police, public works and river lodge, as well as our report of dispersed votes. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
Number seven, public works.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, Mike, what's your comment or question?
Moving to page 48 on that report indicates that we're losing a valued employee, and I'm always interested and curious as to know why somebody would be leaving public employment or city employment as with Mr. Bowman.
I can answer that, Mayor Long, if you'd like. Kevin Carter, our deputy director, is not on. Yeah, you know, it's tough when people find better opportunities. It's not something that the city did. It's just sometimes there's better opportunities out there, and that was the case here.
Thank you, Merritt. I appreciate it.
All right, anyone else?
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
A second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Sianna? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Thank you, Sianna. Our first item of business is a second reading to consider approving an amendment to ordinance 2020-744 and section 17.06.220, Small Wireless Communications Facilities of the Fortuna Municipal Code, ordinance 2020-747. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I'll be taking this staff report. This is the second reading, and really it's just to clean up a few inconsistencies of the original ordinance that was passed last year. Staff is recommending that the council approve an amendment to ordinance number 2020-744 to add language clarifying the intent and purpose of the ordinance and amend section 17.06.220, the Small Wireless Communication Facilities to correct a procedural discrepancy by adopting ordinance 2021-747. On November 2nd, 2020, the city council adopted a Small Wireless Cell Facility Ordinance establishing local standards that regulate the application, processing, locational and aesthetic standards, and maintenance and operation of wireless facilities to the extent allowed by federal and state law. In the process of incorporating the code sections into the online Fortuna Municipal Code, several inconsistencies were noted. This code amendment will provide the necessary changes to remedy the inconsistencies. Section 1 of the proposed ordinance will amend section 17.06.220 of chapter 17.06 of the municipal code by striking the designated text from that section that's indicated in the staff report. And the deleted section created an unnecessary duplicative enforcement process by referring to Title VIII of Municipal Code, whereas section 17.06.220, the renovation revocation of the permit already creates the appropriate enforcement process. The text changes are included in the ordinance attached to the staff report and includes the changes to the enforcement process as well as the corrective language in order to clarify and affirm the purpose and intent of the ordinance. There is no anticipated fiscal impact to the city's general fund because of the code corrections. And this concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to go over some more detail if the council would like.
Thank you, Merritt. This is our second reading, so we asked a lot of questions the first time. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? If not, somebody make a motion? Oh, wait, public comment. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Hearing none, we can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to hold a second reading and adopt ordinance 2021-747 and read by title only.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Sianna? Ordinance 2021-747, in ordinance of the city of Fortuna, amending ordinance number 2020-744 and amending section 17.06.220, Small Wireless Communications Facilities of the Fortuna Municipal Code. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you, Sianna. Our next item is approval resolution to enter into a funding agreement with the State Water Resources Control Board for the 12th Street Integrated Stormwater Project and designate the city manager or designee as the authorized agent. Resolution 2021-07. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Our deputy city engineer, Brendan Byrd, will be presenting this item as well as the last item on this, the business calendar for the council meeting tonight.
Thank you, everyone. So let me go ahead and work on pulling up my screen here. Everyone, please let me know when it comes up.
It is up.
Very good. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Merritt. Honorable Mayor and City Council, it's my pleasure to provide the first of two presentations here tonight. The first one being on the city's 12th Street Integrated Stormwater Project. This project proposes to install a number of LID rain gardens along 12th Street and to extend the city's existing storm drain pipe network further up 12th Street in order to help alleviate some gutter flooding issues that many of us are aware of in that particular stretch of town. So the seeds of this project were planted several years ago when the city applied for, but was ultimately unsuccessful in obtaining a Prop 1 LID grant with the state. After that attempt, in January of 2019, the city was actually approached and awarded a $145,000 technical assistance grant, which was intended to help the city fund and develop a project for a subsequent Prop 1 grant. During the winter and the spring of 2019 and 2020, staff and our technical assistance team, which included GHD and the Council for Watershed Health, developed the 30% design for the 12th Street Integrated Stormwater Project. Also during this time, staff worked with staff at Fortuna Union High School, as we'll see in a moment, as they'll be maintaining an LID basin located on their campus or are proposed to. And we've also presented this project to the city council in the past. I believe it was about a year ago at this time. Both of these outreach efforts resulted in letters of support for the project, which were included in the final grant application, which staff submitted to the State Water Quality Control Board in June of 2020. So now for kind of a quick overview and a refresher on what the project is that was included in the grant application. As seen on the left, over here, the 12th Street Stormwater Project is located principally within the right-of-way on 12th Street in between K Streets and Lonnie Drive in Fortuna. However, there is also one additional LID basin that is being proposed on the southern portion of the high school parking area. At various locations throughout this general area, stormwater rain gardens, which are also referred to commonly as LID basins, will be installed in existing red curb no parking areas. These rain gardens will be designed to collect road gutter and building stormwater runoff, which is anticipated to provide for treatment and storage of most, if not all, smaller storm events. The rain gardens will also be connected to each other via a new storm drain pipe system, which is kind of shown here on the bottom right-hand side of the slide. And during large storm events, what will happen is the rain gardens will fill up, and then excess water will be allowed to enter the storm drain pipe network and ultimately be conveyed and discharged to Rona Creek. So the city and the staff were able to kind of go through a comprehensive process to identify where we thought a Prop 1 grant project would be, would be the most competitive for a grant application. And with that, I kind of wanted to just put forward here a quick list of projected project benefits and why we ultimately selected the 12th Street project for the grant application. So first, the project will increase stormwater treatment prior to its discharge in Rona Creek, which will help preserve downstream water quality, and it will help the city in meeting our pollutant reduction and trash capture targets, which are anticipated soon to be regulated by the State Water Quality Control Board in future MS4 permits. The project will also help alleviate gutter flooding issues by providing a new storm drain pipe and extending it up 12th Street. The project will help reduce peak flows to Rona Creek, which will help improve fish passage conditions, as well as reduce downstream channel erosion and flooding potential. The project will improve pedestrian safety along 12th Street by providing for shorter crosswalk distances at all intersections that are retrofitted with the LID bulbouts. And lastly, the project will provide kind of an aesthetic component to 12th Street as well, which should help provide for some, you know, visual contrast with a lot of the impervious surface that's out there right now. The basins, you know, we're looking at planning right now, will include a typical distribution of LID-type plants and grasses, similar to like you see in the basins in front of 12th Street. But we're also hoping to incorporate a little bit more ornamental flavor to this as well with some, you know, nice other species that make it fit in a little bit with some of the other bulbouts and planted areas in the downtown area. So I guess fast forward to the fun part, which is in February of this year, staff was notified that our grant application that we submitted last year was ultimately successful. So that's very exciting, as always. The grant is now going to bring an additional almost a million dollars, nine hundred and forty five thousand dollars of state funding to a project in the city of Fortuna. So, you know, this is great stuff when we can go after these projects and leverage local funds or in some case, no local funds to get really impactful projects done in the city. This grant particularly does require a ten percent city match, which is a total amount of about a hundred and five thousand dollars. Staff have already budgeted fifty thousand of this amount in the current fiscal year's Measure E funds, and we anticipate presenting the remaining fifty five thousand dollars needed for the match as a Measure E project in the upcoming budget year. So as always, with the excitement of grant success comes a lot more paperwork. But over the next several weeks, staff will be working to finalize what's called Phase Two of our grant application, which is just kind of, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's and getting everything in order in order to have a finalized, successful application. And one of those things is an authorizing resolution, which needs to be approved by the council in order to enter into a grant agreement. This resolution has been included in the council packet tonight, and it authorizes the entry into a grant agreement and designates the city manager as the authorized agent for the project. So looking forward, just kind of a sneak peek of where we see this moving forward from here, we're anticipating that this summer will include finalizing and executing the grant agreements with the State Water Quality Control Board, and then after that, contracting with our engineering consultant, who will complete the design for the project as well as work on design, on construction engineering, sorry. The upcoming winter months will be primarily focused on getting the design together and getting the project ready to be bid in the spring. And staff are ultimately hoping to coordinate construction in the summer of next year, two thousand twenty-two, when the high school is out of session to kind of alleviate any potential issue with construction, you know, impacting high school traffic. So with that, I'd like to, again, offer my recommendation for authorizing resolution twenty twenty one dash zero seven. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the project or anything else that they have. Thank you.
Brendan, how many parking spaces are we going to lose on 12th Street?
Zero. They'll all be located in red curb areas, which was one of the design criterias for there. So to my knowledge, it should be exactly zero. So we'll hopefully target for that.
Does anyone else have any? Go ahead. Sorry.
I'll just note in there, there will be some lost capacity in the high school parking lot there in the very south by the property line. But we've been in coordination with Glenn and Clint, with Fortuna High School, and they're aware and they're open to it as well, so.
Does anyone else have questions?
I'd just to comment that that south area in the high school parking lot has been a de facto stormwater basin for the last few years because I helped clean it out for Auto Expo in my time. And that's an excellent location, and it'll pick up a large source of pollutants in there. So that's good that they're willing to work with us on that. Thanks.
Absolutely, and I'll just expand on that. They have been, you know, really great to work with during this process. And actually, we'll be entering into a maintenance agreement too, so they'll be taking care of that as well. So, yeah, it's been a pleasure working with them, and we look forward to being able to work with them through construction.
The maintenance agreement's awesome.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else?
I have a question about the timing. Summer twenty twenty two, how many weeks will the project go on?
It's hard to say at this point exactly. In my experience, projects like this often will take somewhere between two and three months, depending on the final scale of it. I'm thinking, you know, three months is kind of what we would anticipate as being a conservative schedule, which would allow for some float time. So there will be, you know, some planning in there to kind of phase in an order of work to where we can maximize, let's say, the eight to nine weeks that the high school is out of session, which should hopefully minimize inconvenience on the back end if the project is still going on.
That was the question in the question. Regarding the high school.
If I could just expand on that, too. Councilmember Stanfield, one of the things we do is we coordinate work around event season. So typically, when we put together the specifications, we don't allow work during special events. So that's a big one. Avoid school, traffic, and any larger unusual event. So that's something that we're used to working into projects.
Anyone else? All right, we'll open it up to the public. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing no one, we can move on to a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize resolution twenty twenty one dash zero seven and read by title only.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Siana?
Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero seven, a resolution authorizing entering into a funding agreement with the State Water Resources Control Board and authorizing and designating the city manager or designee as the signatory for the 12th Street Integrated Stormwater Project. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you, Siana. Moving on to our next item, award construction contract for the Redwood Way Reconstruction Project to Mercer Fraser Company and authorize the city manager to execute agreements with the California Department of Transportation. Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero eight. Staff report, please.
Thank you, everyone. Well, it's me again. And I will open up my presentation here, so let me know when you guys get this one.
Got it?
Oops. Sorry about that. Okay. Yeah, flash forward here. Okay. So thank you very much again for your time, honorable mayor and city council. It's once again my pleasure to present another staff report here, and this one is the contract award recommendation to Mercer Fraser Company for the city's Redwood Way Reconstruction Project. So I kind of wanted to start out here by establishing the need of the project. So I went out to Redwood Way today and took a few photos, and I'd like to share them with you here. As seen below, Redwood Way is largely covered with pavement deterioration and failure. This particular kind is commonly referred to as alligator cracking. Even with several smaller paving projects in recent years to fix these issues, this cracking still covers approximately fifty percent of the traveled lanes along the unimproved areas of Redwood Way. Cracking like this is typically a sign of failed pavement, weak subgrade, and ultimately a roadway surface that is at the end of its design life. And repairs often require excavation and replacement of this material. So with this need in mind, several years ago, the city identified the need to rebuild and repave the road, and that's what's turned into the Redwood Way Reconstruction Project, which, as far as this project is concerned right now, that is about to go to construction, is composed of the following three components. So the first are the road improvements. So within the area here on this little orange polygon I've just brought up is the area that's going to be receiving reconstruction of the roadway and pavement overlay. So these are the failed paving areas that are ultimately going to be repaired. And after those areas have been repaired, the entire roadway will then receive a new pavement overlay, which will increase the total strength of the entire road. The second part will be of particular importance, given that this area of road still has a significant potential for future development. And as such, you know, the traffic use of this road is only projected to increase. So rebuilding it now is probably, you know, a very prudent measure, given the future of this area. So the second part of the project are pedestrian improvements. And what you'll see came up is this little red strip over by St. Joseph's Drive, as well as these little indicators for a crosswalk over on the western side of the project. So as part of this project, new sidewalk infill will be installed in between the Twin Creek subdivision, which is located just east of Strong's Creek, all the way over to St. Joseph's Drive, where there is an existing sidewalk that connects to Renner Drive and ultimately, Ronerville Road. So this last portion of sidewalk infill will finally complete a full walking path for pedestrians to travel from the Boulevard to Ronerville Road safely on a sidewalk. As I noted previously, there's also going to be one improved enhanced crosswalk that'll be installed over by the intersection of Maxwell Street and Redwood Way. And those are the style that were put in over town last summer as part of the Hzip Unsignaled Intersection Project. The last improvement that'll be part of this project is for bicyclists. And as you'll see in this little blue area over here, we are planning with this project to widen the shoulder in this area of Redwood Way to act as a five-foot bike lane. Right now, and as we'll discuss a little bit further, we are anticipating having potentially some money to expand the widening efforts and add even more bike lanes on the north side of Redwood Way as well. And that'll ultimately come down to how much construction budget we feel like we have, and staff will be working with our contractor moving forward to maximize the amount of improvements that we can ultimately offer for this project. But I just wanted to highlight here this one particular stretch of blue, which is budgeted for and is currently in the bid that we are recommending for award to Mercer Fraser. So the project was advertised for bid in early February, and at the end of February, the city received five bids from a mixture of local and out-of-town contractors. As you can see here in the table on the far right, the low bid went to Mercer Fraser Company, who after review, a review of their bid package are being recommended by staff for award of the construction contract. Their bid came in at approximately nine hundred and sixty four thousand, which is well within the range of the construction budget. And I'd like to note it's a very, very competitive bid, and so we are very happy to have a local contractor that likes to work for us here in Fortuna. So moving on to project funding and budget, and ultimately the fiscal impact. The project is being delivered by a suite of funding sources, including the following. The city will be funding with traffic impact fee funds from Fund One Forty, an amount to cover the engineering design and construction phases of the project as shown here. At present, the engineering design phase is under budget, and therefore, the overall budget coming out of One Forty looks to be in quite good shape at this point. The construction phase of the project is funded by two sources. The first is an allocation from the State Transportation Improvement Program, which the city applied for and received in two thousand and eighteen. These funds, which total one point one five million dollars, are administered by Caltrans as state-only funds. The second source for construction is from the Humboldt County Association of Governments, which sets aside money annually that local agencies can apply for to use on bike and pedestrian improvement projects. In February of two thousand twenty one, so this year, staff applied for fifty thousand dollars from HCOG to help expand the bike lane improvements, as I had mentioned previously, on the Redwood Way project. These funds are anticipated to be awarded at HCOG's May board meeting just in time for the project. As I noted previously, Mercer Fraser's bid is well within the city's established budget, and therefore, we anticipate being able to expand pavement rehabilitation if needed, or again, to expand the bike lane improvements to include the north side of Redwood Way as well. So lastly, I wanted to provide a quick roadmap, beginning here with tonight, and ultimately leading to completion of the project. So tonight, staff recommend award of the construction project to Mercer Fraser and recommend authorizing resolution twenty twenty one dash zero eight, which will allow the city to enter into a program supplement agreement with Caltrans and ultimately receive the one point one five million dollars in stip funding. This resolution will also be able to be used on future Caltrans-funded projects in order to enter into funding agreements and represents a master or blanket resolution that will allow us to not have to do this all the time on a project-specific basis. After tonight, staff will spend the remainder of March contracting with Mercer Fraser. In between March and May, staff will work with the contractor to determine the potential expansion of bike lanes for the project and work on developing a traffic control plan that fits their proposed construction activities. Once a traffic control plan has been identified, staff will use this to engage with businesses along Redwood Way and will provide updates to the greater community on traffic control via council updates, social media, news coverage, and updates on the city website. On a happy note, I would like to say we in no way anticipate any need for full road closure, and most of the time, we believe that the construction project will be administered with one or two-way controlled traffic. So all of this will lead towards construction, which we anticipate to begin in late May, and we anticipate the project to be completed by late July. The contract has in it right now, I believe, somewhere between thirty-five and forty working days, which is about two months. So I added a, you know, with a late July anticipated time, that would leave a few flex weeks in there for in case of some reason where something were to happen. So with that, I'd like to make my final recommendation to award a construction contract for the Redwood Way Project to Mercer Fraser and recommend authorizing of resolution twenty twenty one dash zero eight. Thank you very much, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brendan. Does anyone have any questions? We can open public comment. Does anyone from the public have any questions? Hearing then, we can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to award the Redwood Way Reconstruction Project, CIP ninety-nine seventy-nine, to Mercer Fraser Company and establish a maximum contract amount of one point two million dollars. Approve resolution twenty twenty one dash oh eight and read by title only.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Siana?
Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero eight, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the California Department of Transportation for all of the city of Fortuna projects. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you, Siana. The next two items I added as discussion items because, as you all know, we can't violate the Brown Act by talking to each other outside of a council meeting. And I just kind of wanted you to update, wanted to update you on some of the things that are happening in our community right now. So our first one is discussion regarding Redwood Memorial Hospital cancellation of obstetrics services. Can we just say? And submitting a letter of opposition to the attorney general. The board of supervisors has already sent in their letter of opposition to the attorney general. And I have had several meetings with community members and doctors regarding this. My dog is barking. The community is demanding to be heard on this. Sorry. Let her out, or she's not going to stop.
All the joys of pet ownership.
She hears Wally in the kitchen, and she wants food. So the community is just really demanding to be heard on this because this decision was made without any community involvement or interaction. And there are some real grave concerns from doctors and nurses and community members on the issue. And this is me personally. I feel that St. Joe's administration has been less than truthful, and that really concerns me. And the repercussions against anyone that is speaking out is really troubling. I've spoken to nurses, and they've just asked to remain anonymous because they really need their jobs. So there's a real fear factor between the nurses, the docs, the staff, and the administration. That's really unfortunate, too. So the other thing, and I don't know, I haven't researched this yet, but there was a report that was posted on Facebook, so you know it's got to be true, right? But in two thousand nineteen, it said that Redwood Memorial Hospital had a profit of eleven million dollars. Now, like I said, I haven't researched it, but if that's true, how much of a profit do they need to make? They say OB loses money, and that may well be. But if they made eleven million dollars, that seems like a pretty good return. So my question to you guys is, I've been talking to lots and lots of people, and my question to you is, does the council want to host a community town hall type meeting? And if we do, what does that look like? And we also have some members of the public that would like to comment. I know Michelle Busnell has been very involved, and she's trying to do what she can to get in touch with some of our, Senator McGuire, Senator Woods, the AG. And so I know she wants to comment on this item as well. So if anyone from the public wants to comment, now would be the time, and then we'll just have a discussion with the council and the public. Mike Johnson, you got your hand up.
I was just going to say, until you said you were going to come back to us. Go ahead and do that. Let the public. I was just gonna say, until you said you were gonna come back to us, go ahead and do that. Let the public speak first.
Okay. So if anyone from the public wants to speak, now's your chance.
Sue, can I speak, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, hi, council members. Um, I would like to um um, talk in support of keeping the OB department at Redwood Memorial Hospital. And I wanted to express that not only do you lose the OB department, but you it is very scary when you start losing services um and what could follow. Southern Humboldt area and um Dinsmore area out thirty six are dependent on Redwood Memorial and it's a it's a long ways for the southern region to go um way farther than the twenty minutes than Eureka. I think that the OB department, me personally, um, is just so vital to Redwood Memorial and to the city of Fortuna and the southern area of Humboldt County. And I hope that um we could be heard as a community and I'm very supportive of um the community members wanting um Redwood Memorial OB to stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else from the public wanted to speak?
Yes, Sue, I would like to speak, please.
Sure.
Okay. So my name is Erica Thompson. I'm a community member. I um, I have to state my address.
Nah.
I live here in Fortuna. Um, so I uh, I live here in Fortuna and I've lived in Fortuna for twenty years, but and I was born at Redwood Memorial Hospital, as was my father, my husband. My boys are third generation Redwood Memorial uh babies, but I grew up in Southern Humboldt, right? I'm originally from Weah Myers Flat area, Garberville area. And I want to share a quick story with you guys. I was an only child until I was fifteen. My sisters were born in ninety five and ninety seven. Uh, my mother was in labor with me for about eighteen hours and she was in labor with my next sister Caitlin for about seventeen hours. So on March twenty first at ten forty five PM, she was like, oh, we're gonna have a baby. But we're gonna have a baby tomorrow because she was used to having long labor. So she didn't feel like she had to rush anywhere. My sister Kylie was born in the backseat of my grandmother's car at eleven fifty eight in the parking lot of Garberville Hospital. And on her birth certificate, it literally says auto under place of birth. She was some of the last babies that were born though. Um, and I was, I was in high school when that happened. I was seventeen. And I remember when they started, when they stopped having babies at um, that set of Humboldt. And I remember that there was, for a couple of years, there was a lot of really big emergencies that happened on the highway simply because it took that long for people to remember that they couldn't go there and nine times out of ten, unless you are crowning, sorry, guys, sorry, men, I'm getting a little descriptive here, but unless you are actually crowning, uh, the ER is going to push you to the next OB, right? That they they don't want to deliver babies in the emergency room. The emergency room is not where you deliver babies. And so I just want to put that night, that one night when my mother's thirty eight years old. Third, for third time mom, so she felt experienced, felt like she could handle it. And I want to put that into a little bit of perspective. So let's pretend like Garberville was already closed in ninety seven. My mom would have had to go to um Redwood Memorial. We lived in Myers Flat at the time. It took my father fourteen minutes to make it from Myers Flat to Garberville. Now, that means that if they would have had to go north to Fortuna, my sister would have been born right around Shively or Scotia. But Redwood Memorial would have only been about six, seven miles away. Now let's close Redwood Memorial. My sister is still born on the side of the highway at Shively or Scotia, somewhere right there. Only the nearest OB center is twenty six to thirty miles away. I like to say that I am Humboldt born, so hum raised and Fortuna grown. And I say that because Humboldt County has my heart and it always will. I was born here and I love where we live. We are so blessed. I am Humboldt, so hum raised because I was a kid running the streets of Garberville, doing all those things that we do down there on the rivers, all the things. Graduate of Southwork High School and I still have many, many friends with there. But Fortuna, I'm Fortuna grown because for the last fifteen, twenty years, I've lived here. And this is where I became a business owner and a mom and a wife. This is where I grew into myself. And I think that that is a pretty important thing. And it really hurts me sometimes when I think about how we do kind of have this divide between Southern Humboldt and Fortuna. And I think that we can come together as the second district as, you know, there's so many people that depend that would come so far. And I think about, you know, yes, okay, drive time. Um, I, this will be my last point. I'm sorry. You all know I can go forever, but drive time. It was mentioned in the town hall by Saint Joe's that it was only fifteen minutes. Well, I'm sorry, with one of with my work with my Humboldt Cruisers page last summer, I drove a lot of miles and did a lot of timing and a lot of different miles per hour to plan my cruises. And I can tell you without, without any question that it takes from Fortuna City Limit to Herrick Avenue, right? Eureka City Limit, doing fifty five miles an hour, it takes seventeen minutes. Doing seventy miles an hour, it takes just under fourteen minutes. But then you have to get the rest of the way to Saint Joe's. From Herrick Avenue to the Bay Shore Mall during normal, in the evening traffic, it took me an additional ten minutes just to get from Herrick to the Bay Shore Mall, the day that I timed that cruise. Saint Joe's is even further than that. I mean, it just to me, it's twenty five, thirty, thirty five minutes from Fortuna to get there. And I'm sorry, if someone wants to close our OB department and tell a mother that just lost her baby that it was only fifteen minutes? I'm going to tell you right now that that fifteen minutes was everything to that woman. It was everything to her. So I just hope and pray that the city of Fortuna can remember that we have neighbors. We have these wonderful communities that are spread out for miles around us. And they come here for their services and and we all have to come together and protect those because if today it's OB and we don't put up a fight and try to stop it, what is it going to be tomorrow? Because I want you to look at Garberville Hospital. I want you to look at what it was twenty five years ago. You could have a baby there. Now you can barely get a Band-Aid there. So if you want to lose our, and I, money's money is money's money. But as far as I'm concerned, I am tired of big wigs and suits telling us what we shouldn't, shouldn't do. And I do not want them trading our moms and our babies for dollars. And that is how I feel. So thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Erica. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Danny Kelly's got his hand up. I'm not very good at this, Danny. Go ahead.
Oh, it's okay. I was just trying to hold space for anybody else. Uh, thank you, Mayor Long, for bringing this to the agenda. Thank you, city council for hearing us. I would like to talk about um the siege on rural America. I've been watching it uh at the play out at the college where urban district, community colleges uh receive more funding than rural community colleges. I've been watching it play out in the business world where more and more small businesses are getting squeezed out by Targets, Walmarts and Amazons. And it's this game where the bigger companies move into your communities and they say, hey, we're, we're community too. We want to be a part of your community. And they get tax advantages and they get in and they, they claim to be part of the community, but all you see is the extraction. They pay the minimum wage jobs and our folks don't get uh decent wage living. They take the money out and it goes to corporate. And now I'm watching it happen with Providence as well, same thing. They come in and they claim to be a community partner. They outstretch their hand begging for our money for their fundraisers so that we can keep people on ventilators and so that we can build this service and get that specialist and and we fund it. Meanwhile, they are one of the most profitable nonprofit hospital institutions in the United States. I'm done. I'm enough. I'm tired of the extraction economy on rural America. And uh, as Erica mentioned, you know, if we don't stand up and fight, well, we, we tried to fight a year ago. And Sue, I know you know because I reached out to you and I reached out to uh folks on the board of the hospital. And I said, look, this uh agreement with the AG is going to expire in June of twenty uh twenty one. And they're going to try to close it. And we tried to make some progress that way. And all we were told by executives at Providence was uh, no, we don't have any plans of closing that. Don't worry about it. They lied, they hid. And then they come out right when there's no time to really fight it and they say, oh, yep, we're closing it. And it's an end of discussion. The decision's already been made. Some secret decision in a Santa Rosa board meeting. I'm sorry. This is our community. We are hosting you. You work for us. We're not your customers. This is healthcare and this is our community. We're done. We're done putting up with this shit. Sorry, excuse my language. So we're going to fight it. Now, uh, we've got over four thousand five hundred signatures so far. We're going to continue fighting for those signatures. I got news for you, Providence. Erica is out there getting signatures. So you're screwed. She knows everybody. She's going to get everybody's signatures. We're going to keep fighting you. And then we're going to talk to the AG. I finally, after nine months, got an inside phone number to the AG's office so we can find out what the status is of our complaints. Providence, if you're listening, Sheriff Hansel is trying to follow up with the AG. Senator McGuire is trying to follow up with the AG. I don't have a political reputation to save, so I'm happy to throw those folks under the bus, but I'm telling you, we're coming for you. And if the AG won't intervene, we're going to go to the community and we're going to pull every dollar of philanthropy that we can. And we're going to use it to build a women and children's hospital in Fortuna if we can. And we'll directly compete with you and take all the business away from Eureka. We're tired of this. You should be tired of this. And if you really care about this, stop complaining that the reimbursement for obstetrics is too low to keep the service open. Go and fight the reimbursement for obstetrics so that we can afford to keep docs here, so we can afford to keep services open. Quit whining and come be a community partner. City council, I ask you guys to please do whatever is in your power to help this get stopped. Because this is a moment, right? Like there's very few where we have such a clear point in time. Saint Joe's has said that they will close it. July one, we have a little window and I don't know how many of you on the city council were part of that uh sham of a call that Providence called Town Hall. But the public was not heard. The public has not been heard and the public will be heard. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Danny. Do we have anyone else from the public on that wants to speak or has anyone want to call in?
Let me get a hand up here.
Who would, I can't tell who you are. It says Dennis.
Dennis Lanardi.
Oh, okay. It is Dennis. Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Long and uh and council members. Just I, I know this is really in it. I'm, I'm the board chair, the community board chair for both Redwood Memorial and Saint Joseph Hospital. And I know this is a, an immune, a very emotional discussion and probably most of you sat in that River Lodge meeting in twenty thirteen when we had the same kind of discussion and and it's painful. I mean, my kids are born at Redwood Memorial too. I, and I spent a lot of volunteer hours and I get it. I understand what this crisis is about. Now back for just a little refresher and and I don't really know Dan or his wife. It sounds like his wife is a physician or something. Anyway. We all got together, I think the system, and while I'll just say the system because there's a lot of players involved, hurt the community back in twenty thirteen. Uh, the Redwood Memorial Foundation teamed up with McLean Foundation. We tried to recruit physicians. We put tens of thousands of dollars into it. And this is not about dollars. Um, I chair the quality committee at the hospital and or and have been a participant. But it's about providing the best level of care that we can. And just to step back for a second, remember that this is only about parturition. It's only about the birth. All the rest of the prenatal care is still happening right where it is. It's happening in Fortuna or wherever your doctor is. So that basic core element of care is still being done exactly where it is with no changes. The only thing is a transition from Redwood, which are, to frame it, they're having four births a week. And you have to keep a staff on twenty four seven for four births a week. There's a real concern about keeping physicians, nurses at top quality at that level of activity. So back in twenty thirteen, the community rallied around trying to get physicians, trying to get the program um revitalized. And yet you still have the, you know, the statistics show us we have declining birth rates. Um, and it's, there's a lot of need for resources to go other places. We have increasing number of cancer uh cases every year that need to be, need to have resources and how do we keep our quality at a very high level? Uh, we have a level two NICU unit in Saint Joe's. If your baby's in trouble, wouldn't you want to be two minutes away from top, the best quality care we could have in the community as opposed to right in the middle of a procedure or your baby's born stressed and you have to transfer everything to Saint Joe? It seems to make some logical sense to concentrate all of our talent and all of our resources and have the best unit that we possibly can. And make no mistake, I agree with, it was Dan's his name. We, we're, we are in rural America, even Saint Joe's is rural America. So having that level of care in rural America is pretty impressive. Um, but it's pretty hard to keep two levels of care at that uh in, in a small rural community. So I, you know, if you want to send a letter, send a letter, but really, I think if you take the emotion out of it, there's, there's work we can do together about educating doctors and EMTs and and parents and 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 mothers to be about getting to hospitals on time, what we need to do to work together to have the most successful outcomes. I'm not going to try to throw anybody under the bus or or yell at anybody, but there's some realities we all need to face. Uh, I think the, I'm, I'm very certain that the system is committed that any any RN that's down at Redwood is, he knows going to be offered a job at Saint Joe's to try to get full employment out of this thing. And also, uh, there's Redwood Memorial is a critical access hospital. It's important to use those beds. There's a lot of opportunity to use some of those beds. We have the new rehab unit going down in at Saint Joe's or Redwood. One of the top rehab programs in the entire country is moving to Fortuna. I mean, how good a deal is that? Uh, they're investing fifteen million dollars at plus probably in putting up a state of art facility. So there's a lot of good stuff happening here. And sometimes I get a little frustrated. I think some community members also get frustrated. We don't want to lose anything. But we're actually going to be able to gain some things in this process. And it's a bigger discussion. It's probably a bigger discussion than we're going to have in our longer than three minutes conversation already, but um do take some time to learn about it because it's not, it's not a, a one off the cuff uh kind of decision. It's a thoughtful, discerned decision that weighed in a variety of factors and it affects all of us. I mean, the community board members walk around town with all of us every day. We feel it. We understand it, but we also want to have the best care. If you're having a heart attack, you want to make sure Saint Joe's has the top STEMI program to get you into the cath lab in thirty minutes or less. They do. You have a trauma, you know, a, a high velocity, high impact wreck, well, they have put together, you know, a level three trauma center. They've in the last, I think, two years, over a thousand people have been taken care of Saint Joe's with the trauma team, a highly sophisticated trauma team that normally would be packaged up and sent out of here. So where do you want a system to spend their money? The, to sit, you know, to develop programs to help the most amount of people? Well, that's what we're trying to do is develop and deliver community healthcare. And I understand the passion about OB. I've raised tons of money for OB. But we also have to look out for the community, the greater community and all of us. And I really And I really believe collectively we can mitigate some of the concerns people have at Redwood. So anyway, I've taken more than my three minutes. I appreciate it. There's a lot of opportunity to work together to get information out, to be part of this transition process. And, uh, if you're really concerned, I think I'd like to invite you to, to talk to our CEO. And we can have a, maybe your city manager, maybe Mayor Long, somebody to help, uh, see if we're covering all the bases. I think it's a, an open-ended extension. Anyway, thanks. I appreciate the, the time and, uh, and I'm part of doing some groundwater stuff too over here in Ferndale. It's very fascinating what's going on in our Europa base. And so I'm, I applaud you guys taking time to learn about that too.
Thank you, Dennis. Um, I don't want to put you on the spot too much, but I just want to ask you, you know, I have already met with the CEO. I've already had conversations with Roberta and I didn't really feel like she was very forthcoming. And, um, I just want to know if you are aware that there were four cases in January and February of moms and babies that would not have made it to Eureka. And I don't know if you've been told that. I don't know if that is being put out there at all. But four cases, four moms and babies that were at risk and wouldn't have made it to Eureka. That to me is frightening. And there's no money that can compensate for four moms and babies. And that's just in two months.
Well, I'm not familiar with those particular things. I try to stay, uh, like you operate under the Brown Act. I try to be very careful about the HIPAA, uh, rules and regulations about not sharing too much detail. So I would, I would offer to reach out again and try to go into some of that detail. Because it's, um, we want the best outcomes for everybody.
I just think that's something that's not being talked about and is not being shared in the community. And that, that scares me. If it's going to be my daughter, is it going to be, um, you know, the next person's wife, mother, aunt, cousin, whatever? It's going to be somebody that's not going to make it to St. Joe's. And I just think that's unacceptable. So anyway.
I'm, just remember, I'm a volunteer board member and I, and I'm not a doctor. So, I mean, if you were, um, you know, posing professional questions, that's above my pay grade. I'm just trying to do what conceptually we're trying to deliver the best quality care we can for the entire community.
And I appreciate you, Dennis. And I don't mean to put you on the spot per se, but I really think that there's a lot of information that's not being shared. And that is what concerns me the most.
Well, can we commit to try to work on some of that so we can break down some of those barriers? I really, I really think it, it's in everyone's best interest that we all understand. Because we have a great healthcare delivery system up here. We really do. Uh, we have full-time neurology coverage. Who in a small community has 24/7 Euro coverage? There's some good stuff. And, and I know it's emotional, but let's, if we can commit to working together. And I think we can solve a lot of this stuff and move it together and, and do a better job, everyone. Anyway, thanks. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for talking to us tonight. And does anyone from the council have any comments or want to tie in? Mike Johnson.
I, I appreciate Mr. Lanardi coming and speaking. And he may be right in that there's some emotion in there, but it's because it hits close to home into our own families and into the way that we've had information conveyed to us. Because this whole matter was, went from a news article to a, um, team, Microsoft Teams visual meeting in like a week, it feels like, to where it was like, okay, this is a done deal. And people have invested time and money and, um, emotion in building Redwood Memorial Hospital, having it cited here. The Redwood Memorial Foundation fundraises from the Yule River Valley Community and Southern Humboldt specifically, you know, further to keep it functioning, working and going and in our community. And it feels like we have, it's hard to feel safe with a, uh, when services are lost, it doesn't quit. I mean, the hospital down in Garberville is a shell of what it used to be. And things were taken a piece at a time to where it is now. And it feels like the same could happen here. And there's been many a time that if people have been in a car accident or um, an industrial accident and been taken to Redwood in just a matter of minutes instead of packaged up and had to go all the way to Eureka. I know that that's not what we're talking about specifically. But if my granddaughters had had a problem in being born, it could have been that they had to be packaged up and taken to Eureka instead of being born right here in Redwood. So I think that we should, uh, draft a letter to the Attorney General. And, uh, possibly I'd recommend drafting one to the Providence corporate headquarters in Seattle also. And we, being so doing, we're not just doing this for Fortuna, but we're also doing it for the people that rely on the hospital in Fortuna from all over the Yule River Valley, down into Southern Humboldt and even harsh down into, across into the Mendocino County line. So it's something we need to take, um, responsibility for and act on. So that's my eight cents worth.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else?
I'd like to speak. Can you hear me?
You can.
Oh, okay. I was at that meeting at River Lodge a few years ago when they talked. And they were talking about one of the reasons they were closing the OB department was because of the lack of doctors. And they said, you know, they'd keep it open a few more years and see if we could recruit doctors. Well, we've recruited some excellent doctors. Our OB department has some of the best doctors, you know, and they do an excellent job. And they're very caring and they care about their patients. Um, we've done our part in bringing that in. And I just feel like we do have a good hospital, but why are you taking one of the best parts of our hospital away? Um, yeah, Eureka has a good hospital also. Their OB department is good. But just because you have two good departments doesn't need you, mean you need to consolidate it to one. I don't think we should have our department, our OB department taken. I think it, it serves a big purpose. I think if they do take it away, we will lose some babies or some moms, you know? And that scares me to death. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Anyone else?
Can you hear me?
Barely. Talk louder.
Okay. Um, from Ukiah to Eureka and east all the way to Redding, there are no OB services for delivery if the department closes here at Redwood. I think that's totally unacceptable. And I think if you're looking for a consensus or a letter to go to the AG's office, and I think it's a good idea to write corporate as well in Seattle. And let's, let's at least do something like that and see what happens. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, I'd like to speak. Um, I will, uh, agree with the majority of our council members and go on to say that, um, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Lanardi coming and, and being the voice of, of, of the other side of the conversation. But, um, and, and in no way is this a personal attack on him. I think that his heart and his volunteerism is, is, um, stellar. And his willingness to serve his community is to be commended. But, uh, the way this whole thing went down is, um, a real breakdown in trust. And I think that the idea of saying that we can come together now to talk about the future medical needs of our community. I think that, uh, Providence has, has already, um, thrown down the gauntlet and, and realized, or made us realize that, um, our, our choices aren't our choices when it comes to our hospital care. And, um, that's frustrating. And so I'm very passionately, uh, in favor of, uh, writing a letter to the AG, to corporate and to whoever else, um, can put a positive impact on this thing happening to us instead of with our, uh, input or our permission or our consent or our willingness, willing participation. I think it's, it's, uh, it's hard to hear, uh, from the CEO that this is, this decision's made with great care and great this and that, when it was just done without any input from the community. And I've always raved about this community's ability to rally around the hospital. I've always said that I've, I've, I've toured doctors visiting to interview for Redwood Memorial for time and time again in my job. And I said, you know, the thing I love about Fortuna and the, the Yule River Valley and Southern Humboldt is I truly feel if something ever happened at Redwood Memorial Hospital, that this community would rally around it and attempt to buy it or turn it into a community hospital or do something to preserve our independence and ownership of our medical choices and our medical care in the Yule River Valley. And I want to pursue this first, but then I want to pursue whatever other options we can come up with as a community to seal our own fate. Um, if, and I know that that's off topic, so I apologize, but, um, to start with, I want to write the letter in support of the OB and, um, to whomever will listen. And if there's a form letter that I, as a business owner, can also submit, I'm happy to do that as well.
There is the petition to sign, um, the Save, Danny, what is it? Save Moms and Babies.org?
That's right.
Okay, so there is a petition that you can sign that's for the AG. We're still collecting signatures on that. And, um, Danny and Erica manned some booths at Safeway and Grocery Outlet, um, on Thursday and over the weekend in order to, um, gather signatures for that and just to talk to people and make them aware. And as they were talking to people, there were a lot of people that were not even aware that this was happening. So just trying to get the word out so that people know what's up. Um, so the other thing, it sounds like we're in agreement to write a letter. Um, do you guys want to host a special council meeting as like a town hall type meeting? Whatever that looks like, whatever I could put together and get dates when everyone can come? Are you interested in doing that as well? I'm seeing yeses. I'm seeing Mike, Jeremy. Mike, Lucy, are you with?
I am, um, although if you want to put something like that together, I think it needs to be in a in-person venue, whether it's in the owner park where you can get, um, a, a group together or a large number of people. Because Zoom, people just do not participate.
Yeah, we're trying to figure that out. And the Nurses Union from Santa Rosa has contacted me, a guy by the name of Ian. And so we are trying to work on what that looks like.
Perfect.
Mike Johnson.
Well, I, I just wanted to build on some of what we'd said before. The, they talked about not being able to recruit doctors. And from what I've heard from the recruiters is that the last few years, they brought in 10 doctors to work here. And they were, part of those were for the OB. And they were unable to work with the, uh, St. Joseph's people. And they got frustrated and three of them left. So it's not always the fact that they can't recruit doctors. It's that it appears that, uh, the St. Joe's structure has a hard time keeping them. So.
And those are all the things that I would like to get the information and have speakers who can, um, address some of those issues at like a town hall meeting. Because like I said, there's a lot of things that aren't being shared with the community. And that just frustrates me. It's like, just be honest, you know? If you had been upfront with us in the first place, we probably would be, uh, nicer. I don't know if we still agree, but you know, it's like Danny said, it's like we've thrown down the gauntlet because this is unacceptable to us. So, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
If we are able to organize this meeting, could we do something like maybe, um, even if you had to zoom in, get Senator McGuire to be part of this meeting?
Um, we're hoping to and Michelle, actually, Michelle, when are you meeting with Senator McGuire? You and Rex are talking to him soon, right? Is she still on? I know Michelle and Rex have set up a Zoom meeting with Senator McGuire and I can't remember when it is, but it's coming up soon. So, yeah, we're trying to get all the players at the table at the same time. Right. That would be the goal.
So Mayor Long, if the council wants to direct, I can help to coordinate, um, a, a meeting with you. And if you want, we could start drafting a letter and be happy to work with you to do that.
Okay. I think that's the direction we're going, correct, council? All right. All right. Thank you, guys. And thank you, members of the public for joining us. And thank you, Erica, for manning our tables and Danny for all you're doing. We appreciate it. And Dennis Lanardi for being here. We appreciate you too. It's nothing personal. Please know that. All right, um, moving on to discussion on state housing policies and pending legislation. And this is just another one that I wanted to share with you. Um, Senator McGuire actually promised at a chamber meeting that he would reach out to Mike Lucy and I and have a discussion about the housing bills that are coming up and the, um, repercussions and the challenges that that presents to our cities. And so when he sent the Zoom link or the meeting link, he had included, uh, council member Stanfield as well. And I had to say, you can only have two unless we call it a council meeting. So I wanted to ask you guys, do you want it to be a special council meeting so we can all be involved? Or do you want to give us questions that you would like us to ask? Or are you comfortable with it being Mike and I and us bringing back a report to you? Or what are you thinking? So, council, what do you think?
I personally would love to be involved in the conversation. And it's not that I don't trust that you and Mike would have a great, uh, representation for the group. But I think in this certain circumstance, I think, uh, more of us equals the greater of us, I guess. Uh, my personal choice on that.
So the Zoom meeting is scheduled for April 1st at, hold on here and I'll tell you. Mike, do you remember right off the bat?
I do not.
Okay, hold on, I'll find it.
But I think that's great that Jeremy would, would like to take part or anybody else, but.
Haven't on here yet. So whenever it is, if we want to call it a special council meeting, I can just check with Senator McGuire, make sure that's okay with him, give him kind of a heads up. So he realizes there's going to be more than two people and then we can just post it as a special council meeting. Is that correct, Merritt and Siana? Siana's nodding.
Yeah, and I just want, we could, we could certainly do that, Mayor Long. And the other thing, I might just check with the city attorney. We don't have him on tonight, but I don't know if, it, it might be possible to have all the council members participating in a larger public event. But I, you know, let me check that with you and, and get back to you on that. If it's not an organized council meeting and it's, you know, just listening and giving feedback. But let me, uh, check with the city attorney. And if it can't be a participation by all of council meetings, certainly we can organize a special council meeting.
Good.
Okay.
Anytime there's a chance of local control being lost, I would like to get all of us together to be aware and be forewarned.
It's been a process of being lost.
Oh, yeah, it's, I mean, it's happening bit by bit.
Yes.
It's April 1st at 3:45. So if we, um, need to call a special council meeting, that's when it would be.
I'll be there.
I'll block it out.
Okay, so I'll send the information to Siana so that she can actually notice it for us. Does that work, Siana?
Yes, it does. I was just going to say to add what, what Merritt, uh, was talking about. I think it's always a good idea to check with the attorney. But my understanding is that you could participate in a larger forum, but you wouldn't be able to have discussions amongst your council members. So if you were just sitting in the Zoom meeting, listening to what they were saying, asking individual questions, it would be fine. But you can't deliberate or discuss. So by noticing it as a special meeting, it would allow you as a council to interact on the subject at the same time.
Okay, I think that would be best, just to make sure we're covered. It's because it's not like a larger, uh, group of people. It's just Mike and myself and Senator McGuire at this point. So it's not like.
Yeah, I think you have your bases covered if you notice it as a special meeting.
Okay. All right, so that's why I put those two items on the agenda. Thank you for, um, putting up with my, my whatevers, I don't know. Um, moving on to city managers' reports. Um, moving on to city manager's report, Merritt.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Um, just a a few upcoming meeting dates uh I'd like to review with the council and the public. We have a special uh council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, March 24th at 5 o'clock PM. And one of the subjects of that meeting is to have a discussion with regarding um an upcoming CDB BG project, a scoping meeting, and also to have a presentation on solid waste uh collection and SB 1383. Our next regular city council meeting is on April 5th. Our next at 6 o'clock PM. Our next planning commission is on March 23rd at 6 o'clock PM. The next Measure E meeting is tomorrow night at 5:30 PM, and at that meeting um staff will be presenting the various projects being proposed uh to the Measure E committee. There won't be a decision made tomorrow, but it will be merely a presentation of staff projects and kind of some analysis of the projects presented by the public. And then the next Broner Community Recreation and Park District meeting is April 7th at 2:30 PM. I have just a few items for my uh verbal report. Um, one of, one of the first items was in anticipation of uh potentially taking up uh the city's cannabis ordinance, I ordinance. I thought it was important, it would be important to have the council members review some of the different types of cannabis businesses in the county. So we toured a number of sites in Eureka, including Papa and Barclays at the old Kmart building, a dispensary, some other extraction facilities, just so our council had firsthand knowledge of what those types of businesses and facilities look like. And so I think it was successful, but to avoid Brown Act, I had to go over three days. And so it took quite a bit of time, but I think it was certainly informative. Um, our finance director completed the additional discretionary payment to PERS that was approved at the last city council meeting, the amount of 255,000 that will reduce the city's pension liability by that amount and also reduce the amount of interest that the city will be paying. And um also importantly, the peak amount as as that, tho- those payments come due. Um, one of the big thing that's happened is the federal government has passed the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 that will provide assistance to American families and businesses. But different from the CARES Act, this one will also provide 65 billion uh to cities and other resources for our communities. And so the the funds that are going to cities can be used to offset revenue loss and also um address the challenges that cities are facing to deal with the coronavirus pandemic, including investments on in for water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. So they put together an allocation. The amounts were released by the League of California Cities, and so there's an amount, and it was strictly based on population. And so the city of Fortuna is allocated to receive approximately 2.3 million dollars. And so the federal government's gonna send out um half of that early on, and then I think uh the other half will be next year. So it'll be up to the city to determine how best to spend that and um incorporate that in the budget for for projects and programs that are consistent with the Rescue Act. And then just last one, just for more overall awareness, our police chief, our mayor pro, Tammy Trent, and our measure advisory committee chair Walt Wilson have been doing a good job um representing the city at the county's Measure Z meetings, advocate on behalf of the continuing funding for our school resource officer and drug task force member. These are very important positions to the city, and so I think it's uh important that the community let that committee know um how important they are. That committee is meeting Thurs- every Thursday until they make a decision with the next meeting this Thursday. So um there, those agendas are on um the Humboldt County website if if the public or council members are interested and want to be able to weigh in. But that that concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Merritt? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to future agenda items. Anyone have anything new?
Just curious when the uh budget conversation starts for the new year. April?
Yeah, so I um what I can do is I can bring a budget calendar. Um, staff is already starting to to put things together. I mean, the first part in that process will be getting the Measure E recommended projects. And so our finance director, um I can bring you an overall budget calendar, but we're gonna be starting um you know, some activities in March, and certainly we'll be into that to April and and bringing preliminary budgets. I don't wanna I don't wanna commit Aaron to an earlier schedule. I'll let him present that, but I I think we're, he he typically shoots for um a couple of review meetings, and those would be in May and then adoption before the end of the current fiscal year, um by the end of June.
I've done this for a couple of times, but uh are these typically Thursday morning meetings? Like, should we be starting to carve out some time for our schedules?
You know, I'll review that with our finance director, and we can kind of give you a sense. And if you wanna set those meetings up sooner than later, I think Aaron would be happy to do that. He um over the last few years that he's been doing this, he has it down uh to a science, and so he's already got those meeting dates planned out. So uh I don't have those uh, you know, hand immediately available right now, but I will, we'll bring it to the next council meeting, and we'll try to give you um enough time to plan, council members, Danfield.
Any other questions for Merritt? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to city council reports. Mike Johnson.
Okay, well, last week, I had a historical commission meeting. And for us, the best part of that was confirming that now the museum's open Thursday through Sunday from noon to 4:00 PM. So we have our museum back. And hopefully, it's just the first of many things coming back. They're getting ready for a rodeo exhibit for 2021 to help celebrate the 100th anniversary of the Fortuna Rodeo, and one of those items will be the saddle awarded to Clarence Bouganig. And when they get the space available and cleared out and starting to assemble the exhibit, it will be prominently displayed, and I believe it's going to be on the north end of the museum in that big ante room back there. Another thing that hopefully will be displayed is a uh, an older baby carriage similar to one that uh it appears uh from the, I heard from the museum curator, Alex Service. And as they were getting pictures ready for the book, one of the pictures of the parade had a picture of Loene Gossett as uh not even a toddler in just a few months old be- being rolled down the parade route in a uh baby carriage that was either a sim- similar or exactly the same as the one that was donated. So it'll be interesting to see that in there. Uh, upcoming things, I have a HCOG meeting Thursday. And I hopefully will be able to attend the uh meeting for the Measure Z committee and weigh in with any comments for that and then make it to the HCOG committee meeting. Um, on the agenda for the HCOG meeting is um some local transportation fund apportionments, state transit assistance and state of good repair allocations. Uh, the TDA set aside funding, part of which is for Redwood Way. And then we have our uh greenhouse gas part of the regional transportation plan going to the full board for uh adoption into the regional transportation plan. And we will have some uh towards the end of the meeting, we have a time for uh updates from Caltrans, and that will include the Last Chance Grade, the Safety Corridor. And they are, uh, Caltrans has actually got a project starting for the area from Herrick to, I believe it's Truesdale, adding uh sidewalks, bike lanes, um and beautification in that area as part of the Broadway, the beginning of the Broadway corridor with safety improvements for pedestrians and bicycles. So we're looking forward to that. Uh, next week, actually a week from today, um I'm attending a CalCOG Regional Leadership Forum for uh RTPAs and uh county government. So that will give me a chance to learn more um and be a part of a larger group and some networking opportunities and learning from people that are actually in involved in some of the transportation planning things and such as that. And so there'll be two people with staff from HCOG as well as myself and the direct executive director, Beth Burke, will be attending that. And that is my report for today. I'll hand it off to Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the 4th of this month, I went on one of those cannabis tours that Merritt was talking about. Very interesting tour. It is extremely interesting to me how um and we we did um all four or five businesses in Eureka and some in Arcata. And it's interesting how some of these businesses or I guess how ingrained or embedded, I I I don't know what the right term is, embedded into these communities, some of these businesses have become. Um, I expected a lot of professionalism, especially with the amount of money that's involved. Um, and there was, um, but it it was interesting and looking forward to that uh discussion down the road with these issues coming into Fortuna. Um, I, I haven't had another meeting since the last council meeting of um the Redwood Energy Coast Authority or Redwood Coast Energy Authority or LAFCO, but I do have a LAFCO meeting coming up Monday. That promises to be an extra long meeting. So I'll be ready for that. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Mike. And Jeremy.
Um, I have an FBIT board meeting tomorrow. Uh, so I can bring back more at our next meeting uh regarding what's going on with FBIT. Um, and then I have uh Parks and Rec coming up on the 12th of April, so that'll be a little bit ways away. Um, also attended those uh cannabis work, or tours and was um it was quite the education, to say the least, um about the different uh goings ons in the county regarding uh legal um manufacturing and distribution and retail. It was uh quite fascinating to see um you know, and and um nice to see some people that uh have come full circle to uh embrace the reality of being a business owner and an operator in legal sense and and adhering to all those same rules of fire marshals and building codes and all that stuff that all the rest of the businesses already have to uh adhere to. So it was nice to see um some of those um some of those business owners coming around to um seeing um you know, all that it takes to make a legitimate business fly. And and I think that they probably gained some respect and some uh perspective and 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 I actually gained some respect and perspective for what they do. Uh, so uh it'll be uh again, uh as already stated, interesting to see um moving forward where our our workshops go. And uh, I guess that's all I have for today. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeremy. Tammy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll just thought, wanted to add a little bit to what Merritt said about the Measure Z committee meeting. Lieutenant Albert Hart has also been a big part of that. And we did most of our public comments last week on it, pleading for our positions. There's a lot more requests than there is money, so we're hoping that we do get our school resource officer and our drug task force officer funded. They'll be doing the ranking at the next week's meeting, so I'll report next meeting how we did on that. And I think that was all that's pretty much all I have to report. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. So yeah, all the council members at one time or another did a kind of cannabis chores. Um, we had to separate so that we didn't have uh more than two at a time. So Merritt um really put a lot of time and effort into making sure that we all got a tour and uh learned a great deal, I think all of us did, and I just appreciate the time that he took because he went on all of the tours, and so that took a lot of, lot of his time that week. Um the Oversight Committee met and approved the Eureka Rops. Um I know some of you may have also attended the discussion uh with St. Joe's, the kind of one-sided conversation that was. Um LAFCO Gordon Johnson has been appointed as the alternate since Mike is um the actual board member and took, so I couldn't be the alternate anymore, so that was good. Um and I think most of us attended the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division meeting via Zoom last Friday or the Friday before, Friday before. Um it's good, but it's just not the same. It's like, I don't mind getting in my car and driving a couple hours to actually be able to network and visit with all of the people, you know, you you do your business on the computer and on the Zoom meeting, you don't really get to talk about what's happening in all the cities and uh different situations and issues that maybe other cities are facing that could help your city and it's just not the same. We do it, and I I mainly do it for Sarah because I know she puts a lot of time and effort into um our division, and I really appreciate her. So um I just wanna thank Tammy, Chief Day, Lieutenant Everhart, and Walt for um being diligent and attending our Measure Z meetings to ensure that we get the funding that we need to um maintain our police station, our police officers and our uh uh re- school resource officer. She's just done an amazing job, and I really appreciate all the creative things she's came up with to keep the kids engaged through a really tough year. So thank you, Tammy, for um continuing to be involved in that. And I think that is it for my meetings as well, so we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I got one more that I forgot to announce.
Go ahead.
I had a birthday last Monday, and I got this great birthday card from the police's um department, so I wanna say thank you to them. It's been sitting on my desk all week.
Nice.
Put that in your car in case you get stopped.
There you go. Now we're talking.
All right.
Hey, Jeremy. And I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say it.
We were kind of lost last week, Tammy, when you, your iPad died and you weren't on here.
And my charger wouldn't charge it. I couldn't get back on.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, you guys. Thank you. See you next time.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
You too.